Trying to do.
Yeah.
Desk here for five people.
Okay.
And what else? Computers, new projector.
New projectors are coming. And having seating for thirteen instead of just the eleven.
Oh, that's nice.
Keep people spread out apart.
Or round.
Yeah. Board needs elbow room. They're they're used to being spread out.
Yeah. Going back to the normal desk is probably not great.
No.
Oh, he's bringing the paper towels back. Uh huh. So a little bit of a jam there or something. All right. We'll keep you busy one way or another.
You mean as a sport supervisor?
Yeah.
Okay, they typically gather names and do interviews.
Okay.
Make the choice. Yes. They have thirty days after the resignation resignation is accepted. We typically advertise in Lancaster newspaper. We'll probably put it on the website as well.
You and Disney. Good time?
Yeah, we had a really good time. We were there last week. We left Friday and came back. Friday. Seventy after that, so we really hit my spell. It was a little bit more relaxed. I had gone before Christmas, like right before Christmas before, and that was that was a lot. Especially with the way like, I don't know, like I didn't, I didn't want it funny about it, but now like having not been around people a lot. Even like with a lighter crowd down there, I mean, there's still a lot of people and there were a couple of times where like. We got on the bus and like we're sitting there and then when people get on.
Yeah.
And the bus driver's like, okay, everybody push back. You're sitting there and there's like people like like elbow like pushed in like it like so. They they made some like. Superficial almost like acknowledgements that COVID was around and like when you went through the lines. You went through some of the lines and they're like put these shields up. Like if you're standing in line here and the other person's coming back the other way.
Right.
There was sort of like a barrier that you could see. Then we took like certain rides, you get to the end and then you get to the queue. And they're like, okay, everybody, you have to move forward, like move up, take up every spot, like move all the way front and they have people just moving forward. So sometimes it's just awkward contradiction of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Regulation.
Yeah. So. We had a throw. We've all had our shots and got our worst or better works were sick too on top of it so before so.
Are you involved with the meeting on January twenty fifth? Are you still part of that group? There's some engineer meeting.
Oh, that one. Allison sort of took that over, but I'm planning to go, I guess. Yeah, Cory and I used to sort of head that up.
Yeah, I know.
But. Yeah, she sort of took that one over. So we'll see what she has to.
Yeah, I think I'll thank you. I missed the last one.
But she's looking to try and get, I think, the municipal engineers as much to help with an inventory of the B M Ps and get it into these. Programs and charts they have to try and capture credits for for the. Bay program. I'm interested to see how she presents it because I don't.
Sounds like a big job.
Yeah, and I think a lot of what she's asking for would be stuff that normally you'd get paid to do. So.
Life in a nonprofit, I guess.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how that one's gonna go, so we'll see.
Somebody was keeping track of that, but I guess not really.
Not very well, no, not very well at all.
E P was gonna do it, but maybe just for the really big ones.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think they've done a very thorough job of that, so. So in order for the county to try and meet its goal, they're trying to get populate this. spreadsheet that accounts for all these B M Ps.
Yeah, I might go to it. I didn't R S V P yet.
I didn't either, but I'll probably go. I saw she's throwing lunch to everybody. I saw she's throwing lunch at the thing.
No.
Get more people there. So that usually helps. Lunch and continuing education credits.
Yeah, that's the big thing. Credits, man. Everybody's about to credit.
Yeah, Nate had trouble with one of those mics.
I have to admit, I'm one of these people. There's a conference, there's a webinar or something, the first thing I look for. Not then. Hate to admit it, but.
P stats does a spring and fall.
That's right.
And if you go to those through the cycle, you can, it's enough to get all the credits. So I usually do.
Yeah. Let's see, A S C E gives you ten free ones. So I'm running out of interesting ones, but I try to take advantage of at least five or six of them if I can.
Have yours been hard to get with?
Well, we're allowed to be online most now.
Oh, are you?
Yeah, before COVID, we had a limitation. You can only get so many hours online, but now that's opened up and it's been great. So yeah, you get a lot.
It's not practical anymore.
Well, you get more work done that way.
Yeah, the last two P stats have all been online instead of having to drive you there up to an all or rehearsing. And I would just sit there and you have it on one computer and then you just.
You just have to listen for the code. So that's the trick. Don't leave your office.
Yeah, I mean, they don't even have anything built in that you have to like check in or anything like that. And the last P stats one, they dropped the certificate. You can go over the right certificate because there.
Just a function, so he's gonna call it. Okay.
Some of them will ask you two or three questions during the thing and then you can't, you have to be.
They have it triggered, you have to be there, like push something to keep it going.
Keep it going, yeah.
So.
Is he gonna call in or we gonna call him? Because it will ring it, does another extension. I assumed he was gonna just.
Terror.
Oh, call.
Oh.
Just started. We had a couple of questions that'll probably be coming their way, mostly about the ability to get a sketch plan. In getting some feedback from municipality on it, but have it not trigger the timelines.
Yeah.
And then that actually probably will apply here too, because I mean, they have now where you you need to submit the sketch if you want the relief of the preliminary plans and catch most of the people with that. But the whole process of making people come in.
Yeah, I'll make sure.
Come back again. It's pretty. Yeah, so we'd like to revise this process too.
Sure.
In similar ways.
Okay. Okay. Look at that.
For a couple of other legality things that Colin, I just started to touch on.
Okay.
Tara was mostly worried about, like I said, that ninety day.
Yeah.
What happens with that? I don't know if you have a good way around that or. Yeah.
Yes.
I said, even if we could require it just for. Almost like the same as what they do here, where you need to have it if you want to get relief of the preliminary plan, but cut out the requirement to come here.
Well, what do we do? A waiver, you know?
Yeah.
They come in, they sign a waiver. I mean, some, a lot of municipalities, they use a general waiver for everything. So any applications conditional use, you know, that basically says we're coming in and we're doing something, we waive all time requirements.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And it holds up?
I haven't seen anybody challenge it, but I. I was asked to sign one for a client and I was like, this is bizarre.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was like, it was kind of like the cover sheet of their application.
Did you have an option of signing it or no?
No, no, you had to sign it.
You had to sign it?
Yeah.
Oh, that was where I could see maybe getting in trouble because, I mean, the applicants are supposed to have some protection on the M P C for the timelines.
That he's not feeling well, he'll call it on his.
Right, right.
He needs to participate in.
But I've seen it done.
Yeah.
It was curious.
That would just be the. Last.
Doesn't start until you submit.
Which probably will be fine.
Like we had a whole debate over when does the clock actually start. Which is what Tara interprets it as, where I've heard it starts the first possible planning commission meeting that could come after the submission or the actual first.
They don't like.
Commission where they act.
Approve it next month.
People have all different versions of.
Different interpretations, right?
Of what of what that is. So the language in the ordinance says the date of submission.
Well, now.
I said to her, I said, I've heard other things on that too. So I said, we want to get, make sure that that's right.
Yeah.
Because that ordinance is updated every year.
No.
And we have to try and blend it to that.
Or exposure, but he doesn't know what he's.
I promised her it would take whatever it was eleven years that it took her to do the.
We used to test on day three.
Occasionally.
And now day three is the day you get symptoms.
So that's what you get.
Today. He asked me to take the test today and if I feel better tomorrow, can I come back?
Well, I'm now on my own, you know, I guess.
Evening.
Couple of years, yeah.
As long as you don't have any other symptoms.
Twenty fifteen, so I'll be starting in seven years. Yeah, I can't remember last time I've been in your guys' office. I think I was in Met with Chuck. Something early on. Yeah, I've been doing working for them, same office. That's pretty nice, you gotta say.
How did traffic go?
Okay, easy to get distracted because I'm in a half an hour.
Thought the four was it, you have one going.
Yeah, it's been, every year's been getting better, so. I don't know how long that's gonna last.
It's all ready to go.
Oh, he is all ready.
Something down. Right now it is. That's for sure.
No. How are you doing?
But you have my mouse this time, right? Can't feel like getting your screen together.
So right now, John Chester's is the only public. And Julie, of course, from L N P.
Before I even had the email from Violet, I had a voicemail from the health and wellness reporter from L N P, just confirming that I've reached the correct person, this is your correct contact information. I'll send you an email, please confirm. I'm like.
Okay.
No, I kind of pointed yet.
I might have to.
So she must have been there and that's an impressive.
Oh, my. Big. I don't know if I really need it because I charged it up before.
Who has the most initials behind their name?
For hours.
No, that one, the guy from. I have sense of.
So you counted?
We're like, I looked at it and went, I don't know what half that stuff means, but you're a doctor. I got that.
We're having a hearing tonight, right?
Yes.
Most of them.
Listen, so we didn't need one. I'm ready. Are you? You guys ready?
Yep.
Everybody ready?
Good evening. I'd like to call this. East Hemphill Township Supervisor Meeting to order. I'd like to start by reading a brief message. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply and the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Please text your name and address. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized, the chairman, by the chairman, please unmute your microphone and after speaking, we would ask that you please mute your microphone. East Hemphill Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking, and we ask that you sign the guest login for meeting minutes purposes. Or follow the chat procedure that we previously discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes. It must be about an agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda items of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. Thank you. We will now move to the first order of business. Would you please rise and join me in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance? And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business will be rezoning hearing, twenty seven twenty seven Columbia Avenue. Res zoning request, one point five nine acres from Enterprise to Community Business Center. And at this point, I will turn the hearing over to our solicitor.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing to take comments and presentations from the requesting party and any interested persons who may be in favor of or opposed to the proposal to rezone property. In this case, the applicant is proposing to rezone a portion of property located at twenty seven twenty seven Columbia Avenue. Action on the petition is at the legislative discretion of the board. I will confirm for the record that notice of tonight's hearing was properly advertised. When we begin, we're going to have the petitioner come forward and present an explanation of the reasons for the request and the proposed ordinance. They will then be subject to questions from the board. After the board has had an opportunity to ask questions to the petitioner, the board should then open the hearing to receive public comment. This is not an opportunity for the public to engage in a lot of back and forth with the board or ask questions of the board. It's really an opportunity to ask questions to the petitioner. And often offer your comments. On the proposal. After all, the public comment has been presented, the board will then close the hearing. And then the matter will be up for discussion by the board and possible action on the ordinance that you have before you. Okay.
So we'll ask the applicant to come forward.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Hi, my name is Brian Cooley with D C Goon Associates. And also with me tonight is Wilson Hershey, who's the owner and the applicant of the property.
Okay. Yep.
Good, thank you. Hi, good evening. Brian Cooley with D C Goon Associates. I was mentioning in the beginning, the property is located at twenty seven twenty seven Columbia Avenue. I'll just give a quick presentation of the existing condition and then the proposed rezoning. Also on the. Zoom out just a little bit. That's good there. Thank you. So Columbia Avenue, the south side site, this is the existing mobile home park, Hurley Industries just off on the top left. And then the subdivision is located on the right hand side. So the property is seventeen point two acres. The existing property contains an existing parking lot to the north, which was part of the Hurley Industries. Hurley Industries did sell this to the current owner. In addition to the existing parking lot, there is an existing building. Well, there's a previously existing building on site as well as a parking area for that. In the hatched area here, there was an existing apartment building and some parking areas with that, which have since been demolished. In the front of the site toward Columbia Avenue, there's existing concrete and some paving out front. There's a large wetland area on the east side of the site. So currently, the property is bisected by by two different zoning districts. The existing zoning line runs right along this area. So on the southern portion is the Community Business Center, which is approximately eight point seven acres. On the north side is the Enterprise Zone, which is approximately eight point five acres. So the proposal is to rezone a portion of the site, which is the hatched area of one point five nine acres from community business, I'm sorry, from Enterprise to Community Business Center. So the reason for the rezoning. Is there's, there's a few reasons for the rezoning. First is, as I mentioned, there was an existing parking or apartment building is located on site. Currently, the Enterprise Zone does not permit any residential uses whatsoever. However, the Community Business Center does permit multifamily residential units. So that's one of the reasons for the rezoning is to place an apartment building back in the area where the previous apartment was. This area that it's being rezoned, there's a fair amount of existing trees that will remain as part of this. That's one of the features of placing the proposed apartment building in that area. In addition, the entire mobile home park is also located in the in the Community Business Center. So that would be adjacent to the proposed rezoning. And as I mentioned, the southern portion of the site is completely within the Community Business Center. In addition to that, on the north side, the northern farm, which is a little over seventy acres, that's also all in the Enterprise Zone. So the extension of the Community Business Zone does shrink the Enterprise Zone, but then that is adjacent to the larger farm, which is also in the Enterprise Zone. We did receive the Lancaster County Planning Commission letter, which was dated May third, or I'm sorry, January third, and the county does recommend approval of the rezoning. In addition, we did attend the East Hemphill Township Planning Commission meeting last week, and the planning commission did recommend approval of the rezoning request. Does anyone have any questions for myself or for Mr. Hershey?
Anyone from the board?
No. With this.
Anyone from the audience? Anyone on Zoom?
Okay. Well, if there's no comment, you can go ahead and entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Is there a motion to close the hearing? Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Pfeifer, are we able to take this up later?
You can. I see you have it on your agenda under, for an action item under four A. So you can go ahead with your consent agenda if you wish.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. Up next is our consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of routine items. That are considered everyday business. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Weaver, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. LaFever. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have one abstention prior to me.
Motion carries four zero with one abstention. Okay, up next. Under action items. What is your pleasure on the rezoning request that we just heard for twenty seven twenty seven Columbia Avenue? Is there any discussion?
That's a, has a clean letter from both our consultants and it's pretty straightforward for our previous use at this point. It was already on the site. So I'm in favor of it.
So is there a motion to approve the rezoning request for twenty seven twenty seven Columbia Avenue?
So move.
Okay, let me just finish reading a township file, twenty one dash twenty five oh one. To amend the East Hemphill Township zoning map, which will rezone a portion of twenty seven twenty seven Columbia Avenue from Enterprise Zone to Community Business Center Zone as presented. Motion by Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett, all those in favor.
If I could, I do think that motion should include the language that you're also adopting the ordinance that allows for that rezoning to take place.
Okay.
Just just want to amend it.
To amend that, let me. Thank you. And adopt ordinance twenty twenty two dash oh one, if approved as presented. All right, so do we need to, another motion or another?
So you're, you're gonna, we need someone to make a motion to amend that.
Ms. LaFever, are you willing to?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett, your second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, up next. Two hundred Plain Tree Sketch Plan.
Hi, everybody. I'm Mike Huxa. I'm a landscape architect with the L A Group. And with me tonight is Mr. Richter George. He's the applicant and property owner of two hundred Plain Tree Drive. The site is located on the northwest corner of Plain Tree Drive. The south of that is Old Tree Drive, and if you follow that to the west, it takes you out to Centerville Road. There's a site plan. The existing site, it's about two and a half acres and eighty percent of the site is paved with a building or impervious area. The. Lot is owned Enterprise Zone, has a single building on it. It's seventy five hundred square feet and it's currently used for the A B F Trucking and Warehouse Terminal. And what we're proposing to do, as you can see on the site plan up here, we're going to remove the existing building and replace it with a one-story building that's twenty eight thousand eight hundred and fifty six square feet. And that building will be used for manufacturing. The, the building location will be on the site of the old building and some of the concrete pads that are next to it. So the new building will be on an area that is currently impervious. Around the back of the building to the west side, there's going to be loading docks and truck access the whole way around the building. We're providing parking for eleven, we have providing eleven parking spaces for the seven employees that'll be working here. Along the south side, we're providing planting buffers. And along the perimeter of the building on the west and north and a little bit to and to the east where it's open, it's thickly vegetated. So we're just providing additional buffer plantings to the south. With this project, we're going to remove four thousand two hundred and seventy square feet of paving to the west in that little triangle area and along the access drive. And that paving removal will take care of our stormwater management requirement. For the sewer and water, we're using the existing connections and we have approvals from Lhasa, Hemphill Water. and we have approvals from LASSA, Hemphill Water Authority and DEP that no planning is required. We're going to be reducing the number of employees and the number of truck traffic that's coming to the site. Our ITE trip generation indicates that no traffic study will be needed for this. I've identified several modifications, but tonight we're here for the modification to go of the preliminary plan to go right to a final plan. And that's our project, if you have any questions.
So just to clarify, reducing traffic, reducing pervious, everything is within the existing footprint of kind of what that was already on site.
Yeah, everything would be worked.
So pretty much in every aspect, you're taking a developed site and you're reducing impacts. Question I will throw before the board is why we even have a land development plan in the first place? And why don't we just do this as a stormwater management plan? We've done that in the past with other projects and to even simplify the process because you're, you're, it's already a developed site. You're basically just redeveloping an existing site that's already completely developed.
Pretty much, we're just replacing the.
Replace an existing building with a new building, redoing the parking spaces.
Replacing parking, yes.
And in the past, we have granted relief for other similar projects like that of not having to do a land development project at all and just doing a stormwater management plan and working with staff directly. Is there anything, Mr. Hayne, if there's anything that's kind of unusual here that?
There's similar processes, but, but I would say that with the change in use and like you said, identifying parking and buffering and some of the other items that are strictly in the, in the SADO ordinance, you would, you would possibly, you would miss those with, with just a stormwater management plan. As far as the applicant's concerned, the process isn't terribly much different here in the township. And for better, we're working with them and they already have one review under the full ordinance, under the SADO ordinance in place for them to, to make modifications of the plan with.
Right, and really with this, I, we don't have any stormwater management.
The stormwater is very minimal, the stormwater, they're agreeing to take some impervious out to make up for that twenty percent catch up that's in the, that's in the ordinance. But, but like I said, there are some other, there are other some components of a redevelopment like this that, that you're able to capture with, with SADO requirements that you went with.
So besides buffering it, what else were we looking at at this point?
Need fire access to the back of the building.
Right, so we'll have access the entire way around, so the trucks will enter from the north side, go to the dock on the west side and then exit on the, the south side.
We've, we've occasionally, if it's, if it's a similar use and they're similarly, if they're doing maybe a small expansion or something like that, where it's an elbow room space thing or there's not a really a change of use, I think there's been some, some consideration of doing a stormwater management plan for something like that with a waiver of land development. We actually just talked to staff about one of those today that'll be likely be coming in front of you soon, where it would be a waiver of land development and.
This is a predate, you, but we did do NOOC Sports all with a stormwater management plan. And we basically, what was requirements that were thrown on that team as they were developing is they agreed to do certain aspects that would have been required in a, the land development process as a condition of waiver of land development requirements.
We talked about that with the project that, that I talked to staff about today. Typically with that request for relief of the land development plan, the board would put some conditions on, on that. Maybe it's that you, that they, the applicant agrees to a deferral of the frontage improvements or they agree to some, something like that as part of it in exchange for not having to go through the full, through the full process. But we, we have not considered that, the applicant did not request that relief. So we didn't, we didn't have something like that to respond, respond to, but again, if it was posed to me, I would say a project like this maybe benefits from, from a look through the SADO just to make sure everything's being captured because this site was developed a long time ago. When was the original development done on this?
Early eighties.
So you're almost forty years ago since it was developed, ordinances have changed in that amount of time. If it was a more recent development, like if we, we had something over in Lime Spring that came back in and wanted to do addition, you could look at a stormwater management plan for that because you know all the other criteria within the SADO have been, have been addressed recently.
Are there any other comments in reference to the plan?
Very comprehensive and detailed presentation, thank you.
Yes, this is the, I have the benefit of the second presentation, I was planning meeting the other night and did a nice job there. Did a nice job here, I think it's a great, great project that certainly will benefit, you know, repurposing buildings and and additional, with all the additional benefits that Mr. Russell pointed out, I think it's a, it's a win for the township. Certainly, I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Weaver?
Nothing.
Anyone from the audience? Thank you. Mr. Russell, I like the way you're thinking.
I will pull it back, but I do think we could give a lot of relief on this one. This is about as plain a vanilla development project as you can get at this point. However, we can do the expedite something that's taken a site that just needs to be upgraded. I think we should be knowing that.
We were able to work with the applicant on the stormwater side of things, like you said, to simplify that down to almost, almost nothing, just cleaning up the edges of the parking lot and they were able to satisfy the requirement without having to go into really any, any noticeable expense.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to grant a preliminary plan waiver for the two hundred Plain Tree Drive project township file twenty one twenty seven oh one as presented, subject to the applicant recording an approved final land development plan and providing a fee in lieu of contribution equivalent to the preliminary plan application fee? Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. LaFevere. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, thank you.
Thank you for your comments and your time tonight.
Up next on our agenda is twenty one eleven Marietta Avenue Sketch Plan, Preliminary Plan Waiver.
Hi, my name is Amanda Groff with Harbor Engineering. Here with me tonight is Lisa Cooper, who is the property owner. As you mentioned, the property is twenty one eleven Marietta Avenue. It's on the north side of Marietta Avenue. It's just shy of an acre lot and it's in the Village Residential District. The lot currently has an existing building with two apartments and Lisa's business, Cooper Custom Homes, and there's an existing garage that will be removed. She's proposing to construct a new building, kind of in the middle of the lot there, that will have eight apartments. And then she's going to renovate the existing building that's right off of Marietta Avenue to just be the two apartments, the existing business will be removed from that building. So there will be a total of ten units total. She did go to the zoning hearing board and get variances for the existing side yard setback and the residential density to exceed the maximum requirement. As part of the zoning, she also worked with the supervisors on the deferral of curb and sidewalk along Marietta Avenue and that agreement has been recorded. As part of this plan, we're proposing to remove her access drive onto Marietta Avenue and then connect to the existing access drive that's to the east of the property that's on the neighboring property. She does have an existing access easement for that and to utilize that, that driveway connection to Marietta Avenue. We are working with PennDOT. They did approve the scoping application just today and we'll continue to work with them for the low volume driveway for that connection. For the existing connection. She will have public water and sewer. It currently serves her existing building there, but will also be extended to this proposed building. There will be less than an acre of disturbance and we are planning to put an underground infiltration bed to the rear of the rear of the property, which is to the north side, back by the railroad tracks. Just like the last plan, we are here tonight to ask for a waiver of the preliminary plan, so this is our sketch plan. We did receive the comments from David Miller today and we'll work with both David Miller and the township to address those with the land development process. Kind of the brief overview, are there any questions?
Any questions from the board?
There is an existing building there now.
Yeah, it's the one right close to Marietta Avenue.
Okay, will there be any modifications made to that building in terms of?
Internal only.
Internal.
Yeah, it's currently two apartments upstairs, is that correct? Okay.
There was a project at this location within the last year and a half or so. And I believe that was going to modify the existing house structure to make several apartments. Is my memory correct?
Lisa, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to go to the microphone. Thank you.
My intention is to remove my office because it would no longer conform with zoning and renovate the two apartments that are there. I had no, no intentions of doing anything other than that.
Very well.
It might have been the building next door, I know they just did some work there.
Are you the equitable owner of both of them?
I'm sorry?
Are you the equitable owner of both of them?
No, I don't own the building next door.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Any questions from the audience? All right, thank you. Okay, what's your pleasure? Do I hear a motion to grant preliminary plan waiver for the twenty one eleven Marietta Avenue Project Township File twenty two oh one oh one is presented, subject to the applicant recording an approved final land development plan and providing a fee in lieu of contribution equivalent to the preliminary plan application fee?
So.
Motion by Mr. Bennett, second by Mr. Russell. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Okay, up next, twenty eight twenty one Old Tree Drive Sketch Plan, Preliminary Plan Waiver.
We're in the waiver business today.
Good evening, Chris Van Archik with RGS Associates, I'm here this evening as you pointed out for twenty eight twenty one Old Tree Drive and very similar to the prior two projects, this is essentially a development to an existing property that has a use on it or improvements on it today. The applicant is Old Tree Partners, the address again is twenty eight twenty one Old Tree Drive. It's located at the southwest intersection of Running Pump Road and Knoll Drive. It's located on about four point three acres, has an existing industrial warehousing use on it today within the Enterprise zoning district. And what we're, what we're looking at doing, the plan that's up on the screen that you see, the existing building shown here, this being Old Tree Drive, Running Pump and the recently installed traffic circle is to the west or to the left there is an expansion to the existing building. It's about twenty three thousand square feet of expansion that's proposed on this project. We're showing a dock in the back, potentially docks could be there. We've looked at that from a circulation standpoint and really we're just trying to be as flexible or as adaptable as possible for the project. Access is utilizing the existing driveway here and then there's an existing driveway right about there that we're relocating to that location just to the west. Public utilities service the site today with public sewer and water. And from stormwater management standpoint, the site drains centrally to the south. And although being at a sketch plan stage, we have not determined exactly how we'll handle stormwater management, but we believe it'll be in a combination of potential subsurface, subsurface facilities and then maybe some surface facilities as well. As far as maximum pervious coverage, we're below the maximum allowable on the site. And the primary purpose of why we're here this evening is really just to obtain some feedback from you on the sketch plan. And then we did request a waiver of the preliminary plan. No subdivision is part of this process, no public streets, obviously no phasing. So we believe it's a candidate for a waiver of the preliminary plan. So at this time, you know, try to answer any questions you may have about the project.
Anyone from the board?
This, this is the old G D Schmidt property?
Correct.
Yes, okay, thank you.
It appears a little tight on impervious, I imagine you're very close.
We're very close.
All right.
Yeah, and really we're trying to look at maximum utilization. We view it as, you know, if there's an opportunity to develop a site that's already developed, rather than consume land somewhere else for a similar use, you know, the site can accommodate it. We're going to show the maximum utilization. I suspect as we work with a tenant, that may get refined a little bit, but we know we can't exceed the maximum.
So there're gonna be multiple tenants in this one?
As I understand right now, at least a tenant here and at least a tenant here. But that may then be further broken up for tenants depending on how much space is needed for each.
That was under a depression that, when that building sold, that there was a new tenant that moved in already, so.
Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Thank you. Is there a motion to grant a preliminary plan waiver for the twenty eight twenty one Old Tree Drive Project Township File twenty two oh two oh one as presented, subject to the applicant recording an approved final land development plan and providing a fee in lieu of contribution equivalent to the preliminary plan application fee?
No move.
Motion by Mr. LaFevere, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Up next will be the Knoll Road Cluster Development. Knoll Road, the thirty seven thirty two Knoll Road Final Plan. Is there an applicant? Doing them both, okay, sorry about that.
No problem, I just stayed here because I'm pinch hitting for one of our, one of my colleagues who unfortunately is in quarantine, I'm sure we all know why. But, so I'll do the best I can to try to fill in the blanks. But I'm here on behalf of LPB LC for the cluster development known as Knoll Road that you have up on the screen before you. This project has gone through preliminary plan approval and we've compiled and submitted the final plan as a record document to be recorded. It's about five point three acres. It is in the residential district. It's a cluster design. The project proposes the extension, Lindana Drive winds up through here. We picked that up, bring that out to Knoll Road. It's proposing two single family homes and then fourteen semi-detached duplex units as well. Stormwater management for this one. Joe facility over here and then a facility over here is a ridge right around there that splits the, the natural drainage of the site. Public sewer and water is provided for the use. We do have the letter dated December seventeenth from DMA and we've gone through that document, we have the county comments as well. We don't take any objection to any of the, the comments or concerns, so we believe we can work out what remains in the letter with staff and or DMA. So this evening we'd be seeking a final plan approval on the project.
Any questions from the board?
I just had one, did we get the, or did you get the Conservation District approval? That was one of the comments.
That last submission was in December twenty second, just before Christmas. So we're awaiting that, it's a resubmission, so we anticipate that approval shortly, hopefully.
It was a resubmission, was there any issues that could cause any changes to the plan, significance or?
I don't think so, really the final plan was essentially the same as the preliminary plan and we'd worked through the NPDS permitting and the ENS design at that time. So we addressed the comments they had in their initial review and we submitted.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be recusing myself on this as I have from the initiation of this project.
Just a question, at the last planning meeting, Anne Byrne asked, one of the commissioners asked if the applicant would meet with residents in the area. I'm just wondering whether or not that meeting happened or it will happen.
I'm not aware that it has happened. At least as a partner.
Has there been any attempt to have it happen? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other comments from members of the board? Any other questions? Any comments or questions from the audience?
Name is Janet Hallie. I live at 818 Stonebridge Drive. I'm assuming she's meaning that myself and my neighbors are not reasonable. We have tried through this process to bring forth our concerns in the way that we thought was the appropriate way. They have not reached out in any way to speak with us. And to make this short, we're simply trying to work with them. I think the comment was made at the planning meeting that they should be, the developer should be a good neighbor. And there's been no conversation throughout this entire process. I believe all, there was comment sent from a neighbor as well as myself about continuing concerns. And sometimes a picture is worth a thousand words. I continue to stress that there are some very mature trees on that property that I'm concerned, some of which that are right on our property. And this evening, and if you'll humor me, I would like to show you the circumference of the tree and one of the trees, because there's multiple. But this tree is well over, by calculations that are out there on the internet, well, it's well over 100 years old. And you don't get that kind of tree or many trees. Not often. This little tree is 31, from that little knot, 131 inches around. If you do the calculations and you divide it and circumference by five, and then by a factor of five or even four, it is well over 100. That's just one, several that are there. Affected by this development and it being right on top of the property line. We've just simply asked for some screening to help buffer between the cluster development and the mature neighborhoods that surround it. And I don't think that's unreasonable. I'm sorry that she feels that way because I think all of the neighbors would, willing to, you know, try to come up with something. But, I mean, that's a minimal ask to try to protect our neighborhoods and our homes and our properties. So I thank you for your time.
Just real quick, Ms. Holloway, is the only que, is the only thing that you're asking for is screening?
I asked for care. There's an existing decaying driveway that runs parallel to the Stonebridge Drive, comes up from Knoll. And I asked that their care be taken when they're removing that macadam, which I understand that they need to do. But the root system of that tree and several others are right there. I, I mean, that driveway was put in 60, however many years ago. And it was, it's right on top of the property line. So I would just ask that care be taken. I have video of the bucket truck that was slashing, I have it on my phone, slashing through the trees when they bulldozed the home and the barn. And ironically, you know, there, while then we asked, and I'm sure that's why she was upset, we asked that the property be maintained. The grass was cut once that we're definitely aware of. But where the home and the barn, it's been a mess for quite a while. And there is all kinds of stuff that was thrown into those holes. So you have to, I would, we've been very concerned for safety.
No, I think, I think that's a, so just to the applicant, is there any thought about providing screening? Is that an option?
Mrs. Cooper, sorry. Microphone.
What she asked for last time was a minimum of five-foot pine trees and/or arbor vida, which are the most horrible, ugly trees, bushes you can get. Because she doesn't want to see our houses because she thinks that they're gonna be less than what hers are. They won't. These homes will be over $500,000, which is more than their properties are. But we don't want to take up our backyard and plant pine trees as a township requirement when it's not required because they don't want to look at the back of our houses. And I'm sorry, but their, their biggest complaint is that they're, we're taking, as, as was quoted on one of the original meetings, is that we have our own little central park in the backyard. Well, I'm sorry, there's holes in the ground, but if they weren't there, they wouldn't know it. It's our property. We demolished it. When we do our grading, we're gonna take care of. Everything will look pristine. And it's not grass, it's in the field, it's wheat, and it's cut between two and three times a year. And that was last week. Her husband told me I assaulted him or harassed him or whatever because he asked me to cut the wheat because he lost his dog in that property. Well, it's not their property, and we're not gonna cut the wheat when it's not ready to cut.
But if I understood you correctly, you would be willing to do screening on their property?
On their properties, but not mine. But I'm not putting five-foot pine trees up that are gonna encroach on the backyards here, where you have 25 feet of backyards.
Okay.
You know, pine trees in 10 years can be 15, 20 feet high.
Can I ask one question along those lines? More towards the engineer. There's a swale back there. Where's the easement fall and all that stuff when we talked about screening? Because we've had problems with screening on soils too.
Yeah, the backyard is 25 feet. The easement's going to be 20, so it'd only leave about five feet. What I'm not certain of is if, whether it's against the back property line.
Does the swale go all the way to the property lines at this point, or does the easement go to the property lines?
Yeah, for the most part, that, that easement is along the southern property line and then offset 20 feet.
And just to check with Mr. Haynes, I'm not for or against screening, but the rules with the township with our stormwater easements and screening and side easements.
No, we don't. The, the screening would, would adversely impact the function of the stormwater facilities within the easement.
No, it would have to be on the existing properties if any screening were to occur.
Um, just.
Chris, is there a plan that reflects the easement? Chris, is there a plan that reflects the easement?
Probably.
Sheet 14 is what I'm looking at right now.
14.
Yeah, just as far as the large trees, I like big trees, but I understand that it doesn't look like there's really much that can be saved there, but, I mean, I'm sure you.
I'm a tree hugger too. But, I mean, it gets, you can't build a house around a 100-year-old tree. And for the record, when we demolished the barn and the house, we did brush some of the trees, but they were, our trees were at least hanging over our property line. We're not reckless.
I look at the plan, I can see that it's, it's all pretty much grading and it's, you do what you have to do. I mean, that's part of the process. I'm sure you saved what you could.
Absolutely. I mean, it saves us from having to plant more stuff.
So my question for Mrs. Holloway, so. I am so sorry, Mrs. Hallie. I really specifically only want the answer to one question. I don't want to keep going back and forth. Are you open to screening on your property? Okay, but for you.
May I interject a minute? The screening is not required for single-family houses.
I, I understand. I've heard enough. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board?
At this point.
Any other comments or questions from the audience? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Okay, well, what's our pleasure? Is there a motion to approve the Knoll Road Cluster Development Final Land Development Plan? Township File 181104, condition on the resolution of all outstanding staff and engineering comments within 90 days of plan approval unless extended by the board for cause shown or the plan will be null and void.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell is there, second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. Before we get it, we vote, I just would like to say one thing to the neighbors here. At this point, this is a, in my view, a by right development plan. And if it doesn't meet our ordinance, in my view, we should be able to cite where it doesn't meet our ordinance to vote against it. In my view, in the planning commission's view, in our engineers' view, and in our solicitors' view, it meets the ordinance. So I know it's not popular, but a lot of people don't like that legally. We are very limited here. And I just wanted to make that statement before I call for the question. So motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries three, one, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any chance that both sides can talk about screening at this point? Would you be, would you be willing to meet with them at this point? Would you be willing to meet with her at this point? We could possibly do that, yes. If, we can get a little something, some lemonade from the lemons, that would be good at this point.
Understood.
We understand, that's.
That you're not obligated, and I appreciate the gesture. Thank you. Okay, up next. Woodcrest Villa. Modification and final plan. Again?
I won't say my name again, but here this time, speaking about Woodcrest Villa, I do see that John Souter, President of Midnight Home, is joining us via Zoom. And the purpose of why we are here tonight about this project is for the continued development of the villas out there. So if you're familiar with Woodcrest Villa and their independent living cottages up on the screen, we can see some of the existing cottages here, over here. This is Camellia Place for orientation, Harrisburg Pike, then Hemlock Drive, the main drive into the campus with the health campus across the street. So I mentioned during the presentation to the planning commission that this project, it's in the campus zone of the township, Woodcrest Villa, a longtime resident of, of the township. And I'm sure you see it as you drive by Harrisburg Pike, the ongoing construction that's occurred there. And we've really reached the end with the independent living cottages. So early on, this goes back to probably the late 90s. The market was for townhouse units, which again, you can see here. It was always anticipated. We showed two units right here, and there'd be an extension of Camellia Place at some point in planning. But we couldn't do that because there was a parcel, if you recall, it was a triangular piece right here that was owned by a private resident. Woodcrest Villa, Midnight Home, over time, got into an agreement to purchase that property. They've now since done that. They own it out right now. This plan as a lot consolidation land development plan takes that half-acre parcel that's situated along the front edge of Harrisburg Pike and basically incorporates that into the overall 130-acre tract, thereby allowing us to extend this area and, and fill out Camellia Place. Today, there's a very large parking lot here, and that will be entirely removed as part of this project. And then the infill of the proposed 10 units. A little different than what's been out there with the, say, three, four-unit buildings, is it's all duplexes because that's just really what the market's driving right now. Everybody wants to have those end units with the natural light coming in. You can see over here, some of the more recent ones, which are the duplex units. So again, 10 units proposed, kind of the end of the independent living cottages as of right now. We also included a master plan for the campus use that has continually looked at the impervious and planning effort of the overall campus. Stormwater management on this project is essentially a conveyance exercise. We did demonstrate that the impervious is below the original assumptions. Sewer and water hookups would just be extended from what's already out there through the city of Lancaster and Lhasa respectively. It's all private for sewer and water once you get into the property. So that's kind of a quick overview of the project. We do have one modification that we're requesting. That's plan scale, and that's really just because we're dealing with such a large 130-acre parcel, and then we're zeroing down into just the small, roughly, I think it's about three and a half acres of development within the campus. We do have the January 6th DMA letter. And, you know, with what's remaining, we're fine with working with staff and DMA to address those items and get the plan in a position where it can be recorded.
Any comments or questions from the board?
This proposed development, it's consistent with the master plan for the site?
Yes. Yeah, the master plan was submitted essentially at the same time. And also, I guess, to give you some background, as I mentioned to the planning commission, you know, Midnight Home, Woodcrest Villa has always been very proactive with this. When it was contemplated about what to do here, we contacted staff, sat down with them, rolled the plan out. We knew that as part of this, we would have to do the update to the master plan. So again, document the changes, document the change in impervious coverage. So the master plan that's been submitted shows the development of, of those 10 units.
If I hear you, you're maxed out with this. And so my regret is that you don't have more land to go ahead with your wonderful project for the township.
Well, to clarify, there's still hope. The northeast end of the campus has yet to be fully built out according to the original final plan approval. But that, this is the end of the independent living villas or cottages. So they do have independent living apartments in the taller buildings. So there are buildings shown that could accommodate future development on the property. But at this point in time, we've shown out, or we've shown the build out of all the independent living villas.
What was the parking originally for that's now being eliminated?
Staff and for Midnight Home down the street in Manhattan Township, they have limited room for parking. So some of that staff actually parks in the parking lot up here, and then they're bussed down to Midnight Home. So, but there's a dual project going on right now that will eventually expand the parking down at Midnight Home. Once that's in place, this can be removed, so it's all in sequence.
Got it. Thank you.
Anyone from the audience? So we have a request for modification and a request to approve the final plan. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a motion to grant modification, request number one for Woodcrest Villa, Camellia Place Township File 34605, subject to staff and engineering comments?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell is there, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to approve the Woodcrest Villa, Camellia Place Final Land Development Plan Township File 34605, condition on resolution of all outstanding staff and engineering comments within 90 days of plan approval unless extended by the board for cause shown or plan approval will be null and void?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. LaFever, is there a second? Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, Mr. Porto requesting UGI gas connection on Homestead Drive.
Is Mr. Porto? Okay. So Mr. Porto lives on Homestead Drive. He has an opportunity and a need to connect to gas service. Homestead Drive was resurfaced, we believe, in twenty nineteen, so he's still under the five-year moratorium. I don't know if there's anything more you wanted to add?
My current system's inadequate, needs to be updated, so I don't, I want to update it with natural gas. It's currently a heat pump. And I want to have the next twenty years be dictated by decision, you know, a year or two out, so.
Mr. Madonna, any comments?
This is similar to other requests we have had. Again, it will be, if allowed, UGI would have to have special conditions put on the repairs of the street. You know, flowable fill, that sort of thing. But other than that, this is, again, it's just like other requests we have had in the past.
So, Mr. Madonna, what exactly is going to be industry? Is the connection in the street, or is it just going to be locating utilities in the street?
Now, it's their traditional two-by-five holes in the street to locate other utilities. I think normally they ask for two of those, you know, in the street itself. The main, I believe, is on the opposite side of the street in the grass.
So they could connect into the main. They could, they're gonna, are they gonna bore underneath the roadway then?
More likely that's what they'll do, but again, they like the spot holes. They don't like to drill without knowing exactly where the other utilities are.
Could we add the condition, send in the one patches that they do the bore, the pavement core, and vacuum out, locate the utility, will fill, drop the pavement core back and flush, as a, instead of having the big patches?
That's what I generally put back in.
So I'd be, I'd be supportive if, if we're doing that. I'd rather that than the big two foot by five foot patches on that brand new roadway.
We had a similar situation somewhere in Landisville, as I recall, in the last year, I would say. Do you recall that, Mr. Madonna?
Yes, that's correct. I believe it was on Cooper.
And is it finished, and was it done to our satisfaction?
I believe it was, yes. Usually when I put the restrictions on, they generally comply.
How long is the moratorium, and how much time is left on it?
I think this one is till twenty-four.
Well, I mean, if we can get them to do the, the cores instead, the big patches, is, and that's usually pretty minimal in terms of what it really does to our street.
Any other comments? Any comments or questions from the audience? Any comments or questions from Zoom?
Add one other, if, if they don't agree, what's my course of action? Do I pretty much have to? Do I have to?
I'd be shocked if they didn't agree, just because this is past experience. They, they want to, it's, it's not unreasonable to have a little bit higher standard when it's a brand-new roadway, and they're used to that. They do this all over the mid-central PA, so.
So, Mr. Russell, did you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, let me see what the motion is.
On the box.
A motion that we permit the UGI connection on Homestead Drive, subject to the discussion that has occurred.
Okay, motion by Mr. Russell. Second by Mr. LaFever, and if we could, let's just outline so that we have a clear understanding of what that discussion entails. What are the items that we're requesting from UGI? Can you restate that?
The item that we're requesting would be that we are utilizing minimum disturbance to our roadways with the preference being its core over open patches.
Mr. Wigglesworth, I believe Mr. Weaver actually had the second.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Rookie mistake. All right.
He beat me to it.
All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Enjoy your gassy.
Up next, Turkey Hill Corp, thirty-day time extension.
Yeah, apparently there is no representation here for that. This you had seen before you, I think, about a month ago, maybe more, regarding their ninth request for a time extension. We gave them one last one. They are back before you, asking for another one, which is the tenth one. Having said that, they have until June or January thirty-first to comply. What I am asking you to do is either give them to, not give them thirty days, which they requested, but give them to our sixteenth meeting, which is basically sixteen days, or in the alternative, give them four days, which would be our next meeting. Basically keeping them on a shorter leash to make sure they comply. They have, have gotten leaps and strides in terms of getting what they need, but there's still some things outstanding, and they're concerned that they won't meet the deadline.
So with the weather, is there any reason we don't give them thirty days at this point?
I think it's all paperwork, actually.
It is. Yeah, it's just administrative.
Do you not want to give them thirty, or?
I think the idea was the last, the last one was the last one, and so this is like one past the last one now. So I think the idea was to maybe, maybe push them a little bit harder. We've been working very closely with them to try and make sure that they, they're able to get, get done by the end of the month even, but I guess they're, they're a little, a little concerned with that, but everything has been.
Have they made, have they made progress?
They've been working with us, yeah. You know, they've been, they've been going back and forth. There's a couple of final items that they need to, need to address yet.
I, I think we just give them the thirty day at this point, because all we need to do is have a snow day or something else, and it gets messy.
Yeah, I, I would agree unless you're opposed to that.
It's, I think it was more of a principle thing at this point.
Exactly.
I, I get they're taking, but as long, I look at, as long as they're making progress, it's, I get frustrated with the extensions where they're doing nothing, but if they're, they're making progress.
Yeah, I think that was a problem with the previous ten. There was, there was little, little happening for extended periods of time with, with some of the previous extensions.
Yeah, we were giving them ninety days for a period of time, which was too long, so.
I just, I, I know that they, Turkey Hill has gone through some ownership changes. I can only imagine what the engineer's gone through right now, trying to get, if that's gang signatures, what I saw in that, that description right now, so.
Any other discussion?
Just, just for my own, and I'm, I, I'm in your camp in terms of the thirty-day extension. But if, if we don't give them an extension for this, what happens to them? What's, what's the downsides for them?
The, the, the plan approval is revoked at that point based on the motion that you made when you approved it originally, like, like the one before where you said they have so long, and if they don't make, meet compliance, then the, the approval is removed. So what they would have to do at that point is start over again with the process. They'd have to come back in, reapply, pay all the fees, and then, then go through the process again. Now their plans are almost done, but they would start at the beginning administratively. They'd be going to the planning commission again, they'd be coming, they'd be coming back here again.
Wouldn't really change anything.
Generator.
Just takes more time.
Yeah, we'd drag it out probably three, three more months.
Okay, is there a motion to grant Turkey Hill Corporation Store Number Three twenty-five and Township File nineteen oh two oh three, a thirty-day time extension?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell is their second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. The SRBC Consumptive Use Mitigation Grant Submission.
So we have an opportunity to submit for a SRBC, which is Susquehanna River Basin Commission Grant for work that we had proposed at one point. If you recall seeing this map, which outlines a couple of projects that we had pointed out that might be easy to take care of in terms of stormwater controls. What we have done, the engineer has done, is actually taking this one step further. If you want to go to page two, project two A and B is improvements, repairing buffers, I believe, Scott can explain much better. Essentially though, this is a seven hundred and ninety thousand dollar project, roughly speaking. This is a ten percent match grant. So if we can obtain this grant, it would be significant towards our projects that we have already outlined. And Scott can explain what a consumptive use mitigation grant is, but it fits in nicely with the golf course.
It, it, it does, yeah. The, with the golf courses, interactions with the SRBC already, with the, the applications they have to go through for the, for the irrigation systems that they have. This, this ties in with that, and like, like Cindy clearly mentioned, is that these are projects you already identified. You can come in with, with a ten percent match and, and really accomplish a lot if we're able to get, if we're able to get these, these grants. They, there will be a lot of stream bank restoration, going in, stabilizing the eroded channels, laying them back a little bit, putting some materials in that would help to keep them from eroding in the, in the future.
Obviously an MS four credit at this point.
It would be all, yeah, it would be MS four credits that, that currently we're being told you're able to bank towards, towards the next, the next application.
With the pouring banks, the banks that will help with some flooding too?
Yes, yeah. Wherever we have enough room, the idea is that we will lay them back and try and create extra capacity along, along the channel without, without negatively impacting play on the, on the golf course, or it becomes a little bit tighter in portions of the, the rec center property because of the development that's happened there, but there are some areas where there's a little bit more space to, to spread that, that capacity out. And like you said, a, a big issue is flooding. If we're able to lay those banks back, create a little bit more capacity along the sides, that helps out in those, in those flooding events for the water to go there and have a chance to settle in.
So it's basically helping our biggest flooding area in township.
Yep, yep, yep. We're fo, we're focused on this area. There are some other grant opportunities that we're looking at for, for this area too, because of some involvement we've had with, with county groups that are looking at this watershed.
And it'd be the Mfield Authority would be the third partner, as I'm looking at what's on the screen right now.
I think it's all on the Mfield Area Rec.
Down the rec, it's none of it's on the authority across, across the property line. There, it's all on the rec's property line?
That has not been mentioned, so I don't know that the authority is involved.
That's the last time we did work there, right, at Stoney, at Church Street, we had to go talk to the authority too.
Right.
Because we were crossing into their property. I would imagine we're gonna have to talk to them about something.
What is that?
It might be.
We're trying to skirt the property line there.
We'll definitely look at that, if we do get.
It might be good to reach out, though. I don't know if we need to actually skirt the property line. They should actually be part of the process too. It's not like this, that's land they can do anything with.
And the, and these are obviously early, early conceptual plans. I mean, we've, we've taken them one step past the very basic, but we haven't gone into detailed design on these yet. So I think once we get to that point and have some survey, then you, you probably have a better idea of what kind of space you, you might preferably have to accomplish some of the goals.
And there's, they got, they have erosion on their side too, so it just makes sense to, to get them involved in the process. I would be shocked if they were anything more than very supportive.
Yeah.
For what's being proposed.
Well, it's gonna take a big chunk out of their field there, it looks like. And is the golf course involved? Like, looks like some of that's gonna affect, I mean, I know there's a stream that goes through now, but.
On the golf course property? Yeah.
Big impact.
It's, it's a channel that goes through between either, either some tees or some, or some fairways, and the idea would be that we would, we would keep that. There's actually a somewhat wide area there that, that's kept in like a higher grass right now, and we'd, we'd stay within that area and do the improvements. The problem is right now, the, the sides have just sort of cut because of the amount of water coming down through and sort of created an eroded, an eroded channel. Again, the, we, we would not negatively impact play on the golf course, and we'd make sure we'd work with the superintendent to make sure that that's not a, not a problem there.
We actually probably have proved that appearance is kind of ratty.
It is, it is, right. I think it's hard for them to maintain because of, because of how it is. We would propose plantings that would, you said, look, look better.
Mr. Haynes, this authored by David Miller or by SRBC?
We, we authored the, the, the work, but it's within the framework of their, of their, they sort of have a template for what you need to, to put together.
Okay, on page three, it begins, a purpose, and it alludes to the significant stormwater runoff from the topography to the east and other water that comes to this project site. And I read through and could not find any measures to address that before, I believe it calls the gateway to, to the project. And I'm, I'm wondering, there's one place, there's a Roman numeral six reference, but there's no Roman numeral six reference following that I could find. There's a Arabic six that then goes into something that may be intended to address this, but in my limited stormwater and topography understanding, I, I couldn't maybe get comfortable with it. So I don't know if you can help me with that or not. I just, I guess the question is, is there anything to do to mitigate some of that mass of water that comes to this?
Yeah, yeah, that, that, this project, again, would, would initially sort of focus on making sure the banks are stable. Right now, what you have is basically a vertical side to the channels through a lot of this area. Those would be laid back. And then wherever we have the opportunity, again, without disturbing the golf course too much or the rec center's property, we would, we would extend that improvement out to create low areas adjacent to the channel, sort of replicating what would have been the floodplain before some of this erosion had happened before. So when a bigger storm event comes through, the water would go down the channel, and instead of just sort of cutting through that deep ditch, it would spill over to the sides and have an opportunity to store in those areas and either go into the ground, or later, it could slowly work its way back into the channel and go. So there are volume, volume benefits to, to something like this, to reducing the volume of the floodwaters as they, as they come down through. This is, this is like one step, you'd say, less than, and that's really because of the limitations of the site, than what was done on the Lime Springs Project or on the, on the Brookside Project. That was a true full floodplain restoration where you went to a much larger scale and, and removed that sediment and created a lot more storage. If we were to do something like that here, you would completely change the landscape of the golf course, and, and you don't really have that room even on the rec center. So this is a, this is a compromise based on what you have available, but it would still accomplish some of those goals, not as much as a Brookside, but much better than what it is now.
So it's kind of the tributary of Swarun, and it all has to be dealt with at that point, and there'll be benefits downstream from this going forward.
Correct.
But all that runoff has to be dealt with within the scope of this project.
Correct, yeah. And, and the, the map that we had looked at before this one showed multiple projects sort of within this area. One of them is the basin up on top of the hill across from the, from the Turkey Hill. That's gonna, that's gonna create storage to hold some of the water back from that watershed, and, and it'll let it slower, let it come down the hill slower, and we, we talked about some potential other projects in, in that area too that we, we might be able to get into, sort of depending on some funding sources or the, or the direction of the board. So all these things have to piece together, because there's a lot of different, what, the water comes into this, this point down by the rec center and the, and the golf course from a lot of different directions up, uphill, and we have to sort of grab those one at a, one at a time and try and, try and work with them. So it's, it's sort of a puzzle we're putting together to try and deal with this piece by piece.
All right, thank you.
When does this have to get submitted? When's the deadline?
Don't know.
The only reason I'm asking is did we run this by the, our rec authority to just?
We did not, no.
Might be.
They meet next week.
Might be good, maybe run it through before we take action, just so we don't step on toes.
I, I know that, I don't believe it's imminent, the deadline.
Okay.
But yeah, we have to keep moving on it, so we can wait until the February second meeting and show it to them.
Principle, I mean, we're gonna be making a, a change that cuts through the golf course, even though I think it's gonna improve. Principle, I mean, we're gonna be making a a change that cuts through the golf course, even though I think it's gonna improve things. Just be good to make them aware before we take action.
Sure. Mr. Lefever, the reference to that section six references the consumptive use mitigation policy of the SRBC. So it's a separate document.
Ah, okay. Now I can understand that. Thank you.
Yep.
But I I don't know the deadline for this one. I don't think it's before that next, your next meeting. Would it be possible to get it a a agreeable motion with a condition that we go to to the the rec board and and make a presentation to them or make sure, make them aware of it? I'd I'd hate to find out after I get back to the office that that we needed this before the next meeting or else we can't apply for it. So I just wanted to cover my myself a little bit on that one.
I don't think we even, do we even need to put it in a motion? We know the staff's gonna reach out to them and let them know.
I I'd still, just from a political perspective, maybe just say conditional on acceptance by the recreation authority, something along those lines that they acknowledge the project. Um, and just that they, that we've communicated with them, wherever it is, just as long as we're keeping them in the loop.
I'm for keeping them in the loop. I guess my only concern is whether and that kind of stuff, if they don't meet and it's due by the end of the month. I think right now we're all on the same page, right? We're gonna inform. So do I hear a motion to authorize um township manager to sign landowner consent letter and matching funds commitment letter from the SRBC consumptive use mitigation grant submission?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bennett is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. And Ms. Schweitzer, you will reach out to the rec authority.
Yes, I will put that on their agenda for next week. I'm not seeing a deadline in her emails either.
Up next, we have the Police Department request to PennDOT for crash data.
So this is something that uh Mr. Chief Scous is online, but uh I can explain what this is, and if you have any questions, I'm sure he's able to answer them for you. But it's an agreement that we want to enter into with PennDOT to gain access to additional cra- crash data that uh our department can use to analyze crashes as they occur. And it requires an agreement and a resolution be assigned uh to move forward on that.
It's ongoing for crashes as they occur?
Yes, yes, just another database, just another, something else to tool in the in the tool belt, so to speak.
Any comments from the board on this?
No cost, I mean, there's nothing.
Does the chief want to speak on it?
Now Cindy summed it up pretty well. It really just covers the state, the event they get a virus because we use their program. Um, we're not allowed to disseminate the, we won't be able to use that data in in many cases in a public forum. It's really for planning in the background.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty two oh four, which authorizes signature on the agreement between PennDOT and the township to allow the Police Department access to Pennsylvania crash information tool?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, we have old business. Underneath old business, uh, we have the uh board goals. So I would ask that we uh take this um home with us and come back next week, or excuse me, at our next meeting, which uh will be the first Wednesday in February. And look to make any changes or modify it. Any comments on it right now?
I just suggest that perhaps we get the uh whatever objectives or comments that we want to make to Mrs. Schweitzer a couple of days ahead of time so we can maybe have them all in one spot rather than everyone coming with their own.
Okay, so why don't we make that the Wednesday prior to the meeting?
We got a final list of who's on what committee? I think I know what I'm on, but.
Yes, hold on just a second.
On a hundred percent. I don't need it now, just one email.
No, I think it would be good just to go real quick. So the twenty twenty two uh working group committees admin and finance will be Scott Wigglesworth and Scott Russell. Traffic commission will be Scott Wigglesworth, Andy Weaver and Ed Lafever. Public safety will be Scott Russell and Tom Bennett. Planning and development will be Scott Wigglesworth and Tom Bennett. Public works will be Andy Weaver and Scott Russell. Parks and Rec will be Tom Bennett and Ed Lafever. And Stormwater will be Andy Weaver and Ed Lafever.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments regarding uh the twenty twenty two goals? Okay, so we'll get get our suggestions um to Mrs. Schweitzer by Wednesday before the next meeting. Under old business, uh, it looks like we have um meeting room improvements memo.
So there was a comment, I had made, I think, a comment in my manager's report that I was contemplating change to the meeting room and the board desired to see what was being contemplated. So I provided you with a basic diagram of what I'm suggesting we do. I don't know if you have that. But essentially, it really is just extending the dais out to basically where the door is and the podium. Creating another set of five seating area where the three is now, which will allow us for thirteen uh people to sit on the dais, allowing us to spread out a bit more. And it also would accommodate some of the larger commissions and boards that we have, such as the planning commission and the Enfield Fire Commission. Uh, in conjunction with that would be also adding the necessary uh microphones and and chairs to go along with that. And also purchasing computers for each of the stations which will stay in the room as opposed to being carried back and forth so that uh whatever commission or board that is meeting could use those computers just signing in on their, under their profile and then being, having access to the agendas. That would allow us to update the the computers before the meeting. You wouldn't have to worry about it. You can still use your personal computers to access the agendas through Google.
We're really talking about just terminals, though. We're not talking about computers at each.
I think we're actually talking about computers. It's actually less expensive than actually getting a, just a terminal. I have to talk to uh the IT department first. But the initial discussions, uh, because I went down that road too, that just a terminal and connect them all together. But then you wouldn't have any uh separate access. It would all be to kind of, you'd be looking at the same screen.
Gotcha. Uh, five, five permanent terminals?
I was thinking uh ten.
But not thirteen?
No, because we have our own on this side.
Okay. And then my only other thought was you, in there, you have uh had something about projecting, projectors.
We already uh got authorization to purchase projectors, so we're gonna be replacing the two projectors in the ceiling. Those are very the pixel is very bad. They're old. Uh, so those should be as clear as the TVs.
Perfect if they are.
Should be. That's the goal.
They make televisions now just, just about that size, it seems.
They do, and we were looking at possibly just televisions, but because we have the screens and they work fine to actually, the projectors might be the best approach. So it's really just to update you at this point. We did get a price for that extra table. And um if there's no objection, I'll move forward and get that purchased. They have to build it actually, but it will match what's here.
And the number for the whole project?
Forty.
I'm guessing forty. I'm hoping for less. But the really driving factor there is the uh computers, the desktop computers.
And there'll be more next week.
Probably.
And we'll continue to have our our small laptops if we want them.
That's up to the board. I mean, at this point, they should all be replaced. And we could certainly do that, or you can keep the ones you have for as long as they work.
Well, I just think that how would we access other than being here? We'd have, we'd have no computer access, right?
You'd have, if you have a home computer, you'd have access to the Google Drive.
I review stuff in advance on my laptop at home. I don't use this.
All you need is internet to access Google, the Google Drive.
I just put everything on a thumb drive and it's transferred into this thing before the meeting, so I don't.
Okay.
I use this once every two weeks.
I I use my own computer. Actually, I mean, it'll be different for me. I I right at the meeting, I load everything up, everything already. Show up with the meeting, I just got put my laptop down, everything's already set and ready to go and all my research is I do all pretty much everything online. I don't put anything off anymore.
All of our our boards and commissions, um we we do use uh online services, whether it's Google or if it's OneDrive. But they all have access to online versions of the agenda with attachments.
So that's a, I kind of would, I don't know if I'd even need another computer because I I bring my own with everything already loaded on there, ready to go. And I'm kind of content using my own computer versus using a township computer.
I mean, it's up, it's up to the board if they would prefer not to buy the computers. Or we can work on updating the ones that you have and not provide uh connections to the other boards and commissions. They would have to use their own.
Actually, can I make a request while we're talking about this is would it be a lot of extra work to just take all the files and just crunch them into one zip file so I can just download that and then because right now I take each file one at a time, which isn't bad because I usually read them as I'm downloading them, but I thought it would be nice to just have everything in one file. Is that extra work or?
No, it's not extra work. I'm thinking I already have that when I upload it to Google. So it'd just be a matter of
Agenda and then each one, each agenda item has a link.
Right.
Which is an individual file, so I have to click on every link and then save that file.
When I create the the Google Drive, I upload the full document to Google. So I would have that together so that I could just simply email it out to you, but it would, they'd all be separate. Because some are Word documents, some are are PDFs.
Right, yeah, and some are spreadsheets, Excel.
Right, right. Something I could just upload and send you the, or or give you a shared access to Google, which is possible as well.
Yeah, I mean you know, yeah, that would be nice. A little more convenient.
I I think it's something to think about, but the other side of this is why should a board member be expected to be expected to use their own uh computer facilities for township business? Now, I understand Mr. Russell's preference. I think we all have preferences, but in my mind, it just, it just seems a a a lot, in some ways, a lot to ask of people that come on the these these commissions and board, boards. You know, I think, I think we should be setting them up, setting them up with the hardware. But that's just, just my thinking right now. I like to think a little more about it.
Well, we currently have a policy which only pertains to the board supervisors that we provide the laptops. And if you have your own and prefer to have your own, there is a credit. So instead of buying the laptop, you would get a credit. Uh, and that's only the board supervisors, but if you wanted to extend that policy, you could do, certainly do that to the boards and commissions and then a matter of deciding which board and commission would get it.
Okay, and and I'm not saying that all the board members should provide their own laptop. It's just my preference. I like, I like, I don't like those computers. I I've had nothing but issues with them. I have a nicer computer. It's and and I like getting, I like coming to me with everything set up and ready to go and already prepared and it's just I'm comfortable with my process. But that's just my personal preference from my situation. I'm not saying that's for everybody.
That that seems like a a good o- option to have. Have that option where if you want your own, use your own equipment, you know, the the township will provide a stipend to do that.
I can uh share with you the policy that currently exists and then we can, I'm not playing on ordering them anytime soon until we get everything set up.
Right.
Uh, and then you can further discuss it.
Okay.
After you think about it.
And for the planning commissions, do we, we provide hard copies of plans to our planning commission members? Is that correct?
No, not anymore. What we give them is the agenda and any DMA review letters. And then they they get the same thing that you get a a Google Drive.
There's no, there's, everything's electronically at this point for them to.
Yes.
But they would get, in many cases, we get the bridge plans, so they should be getting everything on their end, reports, plans, whatever's in that submission.
They are getting the same packet. You are getting the same packet that they are getting.
They get in a bridge packet too, then?
Yes.
Okay, so let's get back on what we started talking about. The room improvements. Is everybody okay with the cost?
Cost being just the 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 dais work.
Right.
That's only really what we're confirming.
I'm okay with the dais. I think we need to have more discussions on computers, uh, just in general.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other old business? Any new business? Any public comment? Anyone online? Okay, we did have a traffic commission meeting uh this evening. Uh, we discussed information from traffic studies on several different roadways. There was nothing um that jumped out that was uh really out of the norm or or was alarming uh that we should be worried about. It was a rather brief traffic commission meeting. There were no residents uh that attended and there were no residents that were online. Is there any other board group reports? Managers report?
So Central Road widening project, what we call Central Road South, we we did finally receive right-of-way clearance. So that's a step in the right direction. I have not heard any update on any of the let dates, so we're still scheduled for the February advertising. Church Street paving, really nothing to go on there. I have not heard lately from PennDOT. The Old Warriors Town Road Bridge, I did want to note that they changed the let date on that one. It is now April twenty eighth of twenty two. The cause of that, I'm being told, is utility uh clearances from PPL. The Farmingdale Road project, um I do have another meeting scheduled with Millers, which is one of the right-of-ways we need uh for the traffic signal. We've already met with another property owner, so those those meetings are being held and moving along. It's my understanding that that's going to be bid February, March.
Thank you.
Again, can we?
February rather than March. Gotcha. I'll tell him. Uh, Stony Valley Road Trail, I had a conversation with one of the owners uh this week, so that's moving along. I actually have scheduled a meeting in February for February twenty fourth to meet with the uh property owners, business owners, to explain to them what we're doing, if they have any questions and exactly what we're asking them to do.
Cindy, can we take one step back for Farmingdale Road? Could we make sure that the staging is such um in the contract documents that the single work is done first before the median goes up on Orville Road? That we don't, we make it very clear in the contract documents that that stuff is operational and running before uh that any restrictions to turning movement start occurring, including cones or anything at this point that are gonna cause that to occur.
Yeah, the, the, the process was Marietta, then Orville, and then Orville and Farmandale, but I'll make sure they're up.
Just make sure it's really tight, that there's no concurrent work where we have all the intersections ripped up and we're putting that in at the same time and really making a mess of traffic at that point.
Gotcha. Okay. Uh, Stony Battery, shall we also met with West Hemfield Township and some of the representatives to talk about that small section between Stony Battery that leads to Kaufman, and that they are open to talking about maybe reducing that down to one lane and creating some sort of bike pedestrian pathway on that McCaptain area. So we'll further define that and also invite them to that meeting in February, so that they're in tune with what's happening. The Dairy Road Bridge, nothing to report there. We're still waiting for the contract documents for the grant. We were awarded the Aher Park DCNR grant for a hundred and fifty-two thousand. I had a, my initial meeting with that representative, uh, more paperwork's coming to finalize and, and get that grant in line.
Can you refresh me? What is that? What's the work for that one again?
That is the second phase of the Aher Park. It is parking lot, another pavilion, bocce courts, rain gardens, and ADA pathways.
What was the last thing, bocce courts and?
ADA pathways.
Okay.
Trails. I'm sure you're aware that the ARPA funds have, uh, seen some significant changes in what they can and can't use the money for. We essentially have a ten million dollar cap, so our two-point-six million, uh, we are kind of open-ended as terms of what we can now use that for. So I'm sure that's gonna be a discussion point for the admin finance group to narrow that down, what direction they wanna head, so that we can decide how we wanna spend that money.
Questioned on that one too. Um, I didn't check in with PSATS, but we got the federal guidelines, but isn't there also a step for state guidelines now that come out to?
I haven't heard anything about state guidelines, not for, not for municipalities.
I thought, I thought there was also some, some responsibility that the state had to put some rules together to.
PSATS is having their, their, uh, town meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, I think if you can update, I think there's, I think there's another step we're gonna have to go through still, or we, we've got, we've made for more information, but I might be wrong, cause that a narrative kept changing, what the rules were gonna be, but.
Yeah, I, I'd heard from, uh, the, uh, Treasury webs webinar, but PSATS is coming tomorrow, so might be an update on that one. The Lancaster Heritage Pathway and the Little Conestoga Blue-Green Corridor, that's a huge trail system that if, essentially is the go path, if you're familiar with that term, which starts in East Hem- East Lampeter Township. It's gonna travel through Lancaster City, come into West, I'm sorry, come into East Hemfield Township. And the most significant thing and the most recent thing is that Alice Yoder of LGH announced that they are willing to host the trailhead at the intersection of West Roseville and Good Drive. So that's, that's a great news. Additionally, I've been told by Jim Schultz that the Greenway Association, Blue-Green Corridor uh, recently was awarded a two-point-two-six-seven million dollar grant from an agency. Uh, he doesn't want to announce what agency, but, uh, it definitely was an award and, and they're waiting for them to allow to break the news. The, uh, group reports, the park and recreation group met on one-eleven. We discussed pickleball play. Uh, we met with one of the two organized groups and discussed the use of the tennis court area. Using the tennis court area, it would appear would increase their court, uh, number. Provide them some shade, move them away from the homes. And, um, even putting six courts in would even allow one court to remain for tennis. We have asked them to talk about it amongst themselves, come back to us with ideas within the next thirty days, so we should have more information regarding that. We also, at the same time, had a meeting with the HYA baseball group. They have become very active and they are interested in doing improvements for baseball in the area. They looked at potential expansion areas. Nissley Road, Noel and Church, or even Noel Dorrit Park. They're going to kind of reconnoitre and come back to us with some ideas and thoughts, but it was a very positive meeting for them. We also had a public safety working group meeting. We discussed the hotel ordinance, which will require front desk clerks to verify IDs when renting rooms. That you'll be seeing on your agenda in the near future to authorize advertising. And we basically brought the new, uh, representatives to the Hemfield Area Fire Services Commission up to speed on, on what's been going on in that area. Terms of planning group report, the sign ordinance amendments are ready and drafted and can be circulated for eventual being on your agenda for consideration to acknowledge and move on to the planning process. Shriver PD Act is a building addition, which you will also be seeing that plan in the near future. That's six-twenty-five Community Way. Twenty-seven, we talked about that. The U-Haul zoning on State Road, the text amendment. Um, will be on your, I'm sorry. That's gonna be on a future agenda. Uh, we got the text amendment. So that's moving through the process. Same with the South Chickies, which is, um, potential uh, rezoning and a text amendment, uh, at the corner of South Chickies and Spooky Nook for potential warehouse area. Future projects under planning, uh, Wendy's on State Road, there's potential for a text amendment. It currently is in draft form. It's being reviewed by the attorney and the engineer, and we at this point do not have a formal submission. And, uh, the two-hundred plane tree was an adaptive reuse and expansion of an existing, uh, facility. Twenty-one-eleven, stick a sketch plan, twenty-eight-twenty-one. The zoning ordinance amendment addressing the condition of use, special exceptions, and by right needs to have, needs to have additional discussion at the board group level. I hope to have a planning, well, actually have scheduled a planning group meeting to discuss that, to move that forward with any potential changes or move it forward as is. And then, uh, of course, the sign ordinance is in draft form. That'll be distributed to the board. Any questions?
I'm reminded of an old business item. The status of a question of a security fence here.
Oh, interesting you should say that. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled with staff to review the recent thank you, vulnerability assessment that was performed by the state police, which addressed some of the concerns that they saw when they looked at the facility. One of those was the, the fence as, as well as some other things. So what staff wants to do is prioritize and then come back to the public safety group to discuss and then to the board to enact.
And concurrently, do we have an update on moving the gardens? That's our biggest safety issue.
I'll, I'll put that over with Scott Hayne. Uh, the issue is the crossing of that creek waterway, whatever you wanna call it. It's not an easy process.
We've been back and forth with Public Works. I think there was a was one thought about how we were gonna do that, but I think it's, it, it changed somewhat recently, so we're gonna, we're gonna go back and, and look at getting out the permit that we need for the, for the pipe crossing. It's a difficult location to, to cross. There's a lot of water that goes through that area, as you see when it floods. And we only have a very small area to, to work with to get a, to get a pipe in and not a lot of, not a lot of cover. So there are some challenges to get, to get vehicular access in particular. We could get pedestrian access, I think. Easier, but vehicular access is gonna be a little challenging. Is there, is there a feel, is there a feeling that we need to be able to get vehicles over there? Or do we just need to be able to get people over there?
It would be ideal to have vehicles over there because all the planting materials, they'd have to load them in the car and get them from the car to the gardens. We, of course, would have water over there, so that wouldn't be an issue.
Is there, I mean, just outside the box, is there a possibility of another township property close in the gardens?
Yeah, we never really looked at that, to be honest with you.
You know, rather than spending all the money to relocate it, you know, if we could, we have the property off of Nissley, right? We have the property off of Noel.
Old Doorwork in particular, it's already got the parking and left available land. It might actually be a good idea. It was just if, it's just kinda weird. We put fencing up and know, and we already have to know entrance signs and yet the residents have to go back there and they drive past all of our public works and police facilities to go back there to, to access the fields, uh. Um, we, we kinda bring on the, the, uh, traffic that we really don't wanna have in our police area.
We were charged, uh, I think by the board of supervisors to create, or actually the park and rec group, to create a overview plan or to understand what we have, which has been done by DMA. It's in draft form. It's kind of been sitting on my desk for quite some time. Uh, but we can probably get that out, show it to the park and rec. They can tell us which park they want to, uh, pinpoint. It might be Don Dorrit and, uh, have them design it. There's grant money out there that can be used to create a master plan.
There's a, the Hemfield Rotary also is looking for a project on the old door with the tail.
Oh, see, there you go.
So they could possibly even help establish the garden and build some amenities. Um, they had reached out to me, uh, just before Christmas. Um, and I, um, suggested that that was the next park that it sounded like we were gonna be doing projects on and uh, so they expressed an interest to be part of that and I can get you their contact information.
That'd be great.
One of the things that I found very valuable, uh, the other week, I took the opportunity to go over and, and walk that property on the other side of the stream. You know, it's, it's really a pretty interesting piece of land. Um, how many acres is over there that we own? And, and I was surprised how much land is actually there.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know the exact, the exact acreage, but, and you may have noticed when you, when you went to get over there. Like I said, I, I've really been struggling with this access point, and I think in order to get over there properly with vehicular access, you're looking at a, a mu- a very significant cost to probably put in some sort of box culvert with, with the proper, the proper protections upstream and downstream and I, i- it's way past sort of what we were charged with, with trying to do initially, I think, to try and get over there. Um, when we started looking at flows and widths and, and what you're, what you're dealing with there, it's, it's much more than simply putting a po- you could almost put a, a small pipe in and sort of people could walk across it or a small, a small footbridge. We could do something like that, but to get cars over there, I, I don't know. We've talked about naturalizing it and we have done some work on, on the other side of the creek, but to the west where there was some wetlands that were created over there and and just really enhance that area for storage of, of stormwater and, and wildlife.
I think, uh, just along those lines too, if we do go to Noel Door instead, given when I was doing Door Door and I made you aware of all the, about the fifteen homes there that were all complaining about, um, the stormwater in that area, that, that specific area, and showing all the pictures and stuff like that. Maybe that would be a good opportunity for us to look at another stormwater project for some, uh, storage like we're doing right now with the, uh, Mill Creek area too.
We actually had some maintenance issues on those stormwater basins, which I think have been taken care of.
Okay, so, uh, maybe if we can have that in Public Works and just talk about that, and I can pass on what we had, what those residents and all the emails they sent. I have a whole inbox full of emails. I only shared a couple of them with you, Cindy. Uh, there's a whole much more that, that came out, but legitimate pictures and they all say the same thing that every over the number of years now, the, it's gotten worse to the point that, that most of their backyards.
Are we talking Noel Dorrit or are we talking Aher?
We're talking Aher.
Aher, okay.
Where, where we're gonna put the garden originally for, in that area. If we're gonna do something more natural and some storage and stuff like that, I think it's a good time and have that discussion and that is definitely on the radar screen with a number of our residents now.
About, if I understood correctly, uh, footbridge would be good. Wouldn't that be an?
We could probably work something like that and much, much easier, a small, a small footbridge to get a, across that would have a limited, a limited cross-sectional profile where the stream right now would just keep going across it, I think.
Would we be able to expand the trail?
Uh, we, we probably could, yeah.
I think that would be an excellent, if we, we don't need parking there, right? And they can.
We have plenty of parking down at the bottom of the, the hill already. Yeah.
I think, let's take a crack at first on the stormwater side, cause there's a lot of land right now that I, I think if we only address the stormwater stuff, any trail that we're gonna put in there is gonna be this, a soppy mess right now.
Sure.
Next out in terms of stormwater storage in Aher, we'd have to do some expansion.
Which would be there, and you said you, that we've already taken care of some maintenance issues too, which will probably help out too.
That was referring to Noel Door.
Okay, I thought. Not the upstream detention basins there.
There were complaints from the re- the residents to this north, to the north, I guess, of Noel Door, that they had problems with, with some of the basins there. And we did address those with Public Works and they'll be doing that over the next couple of months, I think, making sure all that gets, that gets taken care of too. But yeah, we could definitely look at a project over, over here that's similar to what we did, like I said, on, on the west side, um, closer to their, um, house, where we, we just sort of bowled it out and put some, some plantings in that, that would be appropriate to, to be even wetter than what's, what's there already now. When the, what happens is that channel's so small, it floods and it goes out broad. You can create that storage off to the side for the water to sit in again longer.
That's what's happening with the, the residents along there. It's extended on their backyards and basically they got in a point where they can't mow.
Yeah.
Where they used to be able to mow. Uh, that's, that's the, uh, probably the biggest complaint with all the residents in that, along that stretch.
But, yeah, and tha- that reference document that you talked about, the, the park inventory would be a great tool to, to look at for, for what's available.
I will get you, uh, the Rotary contacts. Um, they are very eager to do a park project.
Any park or just Noel Door?
Any park, but, uh, if we're, if we're trying to expand past Aher, when we, we kinda target Noel Door as the next park, that would be that'd be a good, a good potential project to get a bunch of Rotarians working on. Now, I think the average age right now, unless it's changed when I was in Rotary, probably look at sixty as the average age, so. I was, I was the youngest on there when I was in my mid-forties at the time.
Yes.
Are you folks waiting to say something? You're just interested? Okay, thank you. I'd like to request a, which should be a very brief exec session following the meeting for a personnel matter.
Any, anything else for the good of the order? Okay, hearing none. We'll adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-one. We will enter into executive session and we will not return. Thank you.
Say, oh, look at those nice tomatoes. Here it's somewhat protected. There it's much more publicly accessible. Isn't that bad? It is, but, but I've, but when I've been over there, there are people everywhere, of, every age range, the dogs, and there's tons of people with dogs, so. Yeah, access, yeah. And then whereas Nestle or Noel, it's not already used by the public, so then you have less. Just a thought process as you're looking at that, because just gonna reach over that, it's no offense. They'll never know. Yeah, he said he's, I was surprised, actually. He was still on.